Welcome, everybody. It is December 4th, 2018 at 6:33 PM. We're here for a regular business meeting of the Laramie City Council. If everybody could rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, can you do a roll call, please? Gabriel.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
McKinney.
Here.
Polikus, absent. Shumway.
Here.
Schuster.
Here.
Stoner.
Here.
Pierce.
Here.
Somerville.
Here.
That's eight present and one absent, Your Honor. Thank you very much. We don't have any proclamations or presentations tonight, so we will move on to a public hearing. A city clerk, can you read the notice, please? Notice is hereby given that the City Council will hold the following public hearing at 6:30 PM on December 4th in the City Council Chambers, Laramie City Hall, 406 Iverson Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming, to take public comments or protests on the following ordinance. Original Ordinance Number 1992, amending Title V of the Laramie Municipal Code 5.09.140, alcoholic beverages and fees to provide provision for alcohol permit refunds. All information relative to this matter is available for review at the City of Laramie City Clerk's office at 406 Iverson Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming. Anyone wishing to be heard should be present or may be represented by his or her agent at the meeting. Thank you. So I will open this hearing for any public comment right now. Is there anybody who would like to make a public comment on this item? Seeing none, I will close that public hearing. Item 4C announcements? Do we have any announcements?
Honorable Mayor, City Council, Todd Fieser, Director of Parks and Rec. Just wanted to let you all know that on December 7th, in conjunction with the Christmas parade and tree lighting, that the Parks and Recreation Department will be down at the First Street Plaza. They'll be showing a shortened version of Rudolph the Red-Nosed Reindeer, the claymation version, and handing out the 150th ornaments. There's 100 of them to the first 100 people.
Nice.
So encourage you, if you want one, to make sure you get down there early.
That's good. Thank you. All right. So I have an old ordinance tonight. We're wrapping up our 150th year this month. So this one is about the Night Watch. Says, "There shall be employed a suitable person to act as Night Watchman for the City of Laramie, shall be appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the council, and shall hold his office for such period of time as the council may direct, and may only be fired by a majority vote of the council. The Night Watchman of the City of Laramie shall have the same power as a policeman, shall make arrests of all violations of city ordinance. His hours of duty shall be daily from 7:00 PM to 6:00 AM. He shall be vigilant and active in seeing that ordinances of the city are properly enforced, and shall confine all offenders to jail. He's required to wear a badge that has the engraved words 'Night Watch,' and will be subject to the orders of the city marshal, and he shall also be the janitor of City Hall."[210.34][210.34](laughter) As prescribed by ordinance. Gotta love it. All right. Yeah. Just put that in there at the end. And by the way. All right, we'll move on to item number five, disclosures by City Council members. Does anybody have any disclosures they'd like to make this evening? All right, seeing none, move on to item number six, Vice Mayor.
All right. So I move that the following changes to the agenda be approved. We have two changes this evening. Our first one is moving from the consent agenda, item 8J, to the regular agenda to be item number 16A. And then, we're gonna move our regular agenda around a little bit. We're gonna take item 15 and turn it into item 8A. Or, I'm sorry, 9A.
Second.
Second by Counsel Shumway. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Vice Mayor.
Okay, I move that the agenda be set as changed.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Gabriel. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, that carries.
All right. I move that the consent agenda be approved, and that each specific action on the consent agenda be approved as indicated.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel McKinney. City Clerk, can you roll call, please? Gabriel.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Polikus, absent. Shumway.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Stoner.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That's eight yeses and zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor. Thank you. That motion carries. All right, we'll move on to item 9A. Vice Mayor.
All right. Okay, it's Resolution 2018-76 by the City of Laramie, Wyoming, approving the site lease and facilities lease agreement between the city and the Laramie Building Authority for the solid waste building, approving the execution and delivery of an indenture of the trust between the Building Authority and Wyoming Bank and Trust, approving the execution and delivery of lease revenue bonds by the Building Authority, and other details related thereto, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Schuster. Director Brown.
Hello, Mayor. Tonight, we're at the end of the process for the Building Authority, and so we have been working on a Building Authority to help with the financing of the Public Works Center, and we've now narrowed it only to the solid waste building. And we've done a lot of work today with the Building Authority. We went and applied for bonds and got the financing through the Building Authority. The Building Authority's actually financing it, not us. And so I'd like to introduce a couple visitors. One, Todd Bishop, who is the Kaiser &amp; Company who did the bonding, and Rick Thompson, who's actually the bond attorney. So I'm gonna take it over to them, and they can kinda give you an overview.
All right, thank you. Welcome, Mr. Bishop.
Evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. I'd like to first discuss this document that I pass around, and then I'll allow Mr. Thompson to go into detail with that other mound of documents that you have. So, as Malia pointed out, we've worked with the Building Authority to finance the solid waste building for the Public Works Operations Center. And so, the document that I have here today is just really a very clean summary of the sale of the bonds to facilitate that process. So, the first few pages of this document, pages one, two, and three, really, I just wanted to provide you with an idea of where interest rates have been over the last few years, and then on page three, just kinda show you what they've done, really even since the beginning of the year. So as you can see, that it's just a, we call this a yield curve, and from January of 2018 through November of 2018, you can see interest rates have really started to rise, as much as 100 basis points or 1% from the beginning of the year. So, we're starting to finally see those rates go up. You know, they've been low for an awfully long time. On or about the 14th of November, we mailed out a document, a private placement memorandum document, to all of the banks in Albany County and in Laramie County to request a bid from them to see if they would like to own some of these Laramie Building Authority revenue bonds. And on page four, what I've included there are the top bids for those particular bonds. And so, the bids submitted were from First Interstate Bank and Wyoming Bank and Trust, and I've sort of put a block around the amount of the bonds that they would like to bid, and then the respective interest rate that they would propose for those levels. And so, I've included the actual bids or the subscription form that the banks submitted, just so you could see, you know, how that process works. But really, page 10 is what you'd probably wanna take a look at, and those are the proposed allocations for those bonds. And so, of the $2,350,000 that is being issued, given your approval this evening, the First Interstate Bank would end up with $1,665,000, and Wyoming Bank and Trust would end up with $685,000 of those bonds. Just wanted to show you, oftentimes, people ask, "Well, how did we do? How does that compare to other issues in the market?" I've included analysis on page 11, and I think I'd be happy to go into this as much detail as you'd like me to, but the long and short of it is, is the Building Authority, we went out and sold a non-rated lease revenue bond, and our interest rates came in at or below transactions that were AA rated, that went with full disclosure, paid all the extra issuance costs in which to do that. So, we got a rate that's equal to a AA rated transaction, and we didn't incur nearly expense in which to do so. So, I think the Authority far, very well on the issuance of their debt. You know, I included some other information there, but I'd just be happy to answer any questions about the bond sale or that process, if you have any, before Mr. Thompson speaks about the documents.
Questions about the bond? Vice Mayor.
So, have we discussed possibly making these bond purchases available by the public, if they're so interested?
We have, and, you know, interestingly enough, so, I'm gonna take you back to some of that information that I included there. So, if you look on page 10, I had mentioned that we have, I showed you the comparables, okay? So on this page, on the left-hand side, I put the interest rates for the Building Authority transaction that we're gonna privately place with those two institutions. And these are the interest rates for the other four bond issues that I just picked for comparables in that day. So let's look at that first one. That's the Fort Bend County, Texas transaction. I included a copy of the official statement cover for that particular issue, along with their sources and uses of funds back on this page. So their particular bond issue was a $2.4 million issue. The authority's is $2,350,000, so very close, comparable in size, and length of maturity. But for that issue to issue their debt, I outlined on this page what they paid for their legal fees, financial advisor fees, and the rest of their bond issuance costs. So for them to issue that $2,400,000 bond, they paid over $155,000 in issuance costs to facilitate that process. We're going to pay about $115,000 or $40,000 less, and we're gonna issue our bonds at a lower interest rate than what they were able to get it done. So, to answer your question, we can do that, but there is going to be a price to pay to do that. So, is it worth making those bonds available to a few individuals who want tax-exempt income? Or do we want to save ourselves issuance costs and get the deal done at a lower interest rate? That's the balance that we need to consider next time going forward.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions on the bond?
Just one question. You mentioned two banks. Do we have to approve them tonight, or how does this work?
Yes, that will come with some of the other documentation that you'll consider.
Any other questions on the bonding? All right, thank you, Mr. Bishop.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Thompson, welcome. The floor is yours.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the Council, it's a pleasure to be back again before you. One of the things you have before you tonight is a resolution to approve the two leases, and then you have the documents, the site lease, the facilities lease, the indenture of trust, and the leasehold mortgage. These documents are the same as the ones you had before, except that, at the time we provided those initially in your packets, we didn't have the sale information from the bonds. So now, the amounts have been filled in, the $2,350,000, and the schedules have been completed, namely Schedule C on the facilities lease, which sets forth the lease payments, the semi-annual lease payments, and on the trust indenture, we're now able to complete page 13, which is the bond payment schedule, and the interest rates on each of those maturities of the bonds starting from now through 2033. So, the resolution provides for you to approve the form of the site lease and the facilities lease, and authorize its execution by the city officials. The trust indenture and the leasehold mortgage are not executed by the city. Those are provided to you for information and approval purposes, but the city does not execute those. Those are between the Building Authority and Wyoming Bank and Trust as the trustee. The Building Authority is the issuer of the bonds, and it executes an indenture in favor of the trustee pledging the revenues from the facilities lease for the repayment of the bonds. The facilities lease is subject to annual appropriation by the city. The city's not obligated beyond one fiscal year, and it renews each year unless the city chooses not to appropriate. That's done to keep the lease in compliance with state law. The Building Authority also gives a leasehold mortgage on the site lease. So what we did is, we have a piece of the north campus that has the building that will be the solid waste building, the northernmost building. We carved out a tract, and the site lease covers that. It's shown on the last page of the site lease. I think there's a map. Is it the site lease? There's a little map, and the area in red is the area that's subject to the site lease. The whole thing you're looking at is that whole campus, but the area in red will be site leased from the city to the Building Authority, then the Building Authority leases back the facilities on the facilities lease, and it's those rent payments that the city makes to the Building Authority that the Building Authority will use to pay the bonds. So I know that's kind of a high-level overview. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. I didn't wanna get too much down in the weeds, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
It feels like we've been in the weeds on this particular subject for, I don't know, 18 months. It's been a long time. Questions on the Building Authority and how this transaction will work? Any questions for Mr. Thompson?
Do you want me to add anything?
Just a second. No questions? No more questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So, we'll open to public comment before we do our amendment for substitution. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none. Vice Mayor.
Okay, so this is just a little housekeeping. We'd like to amend by substitution Resolution 2018-76 to 2018-76A. All documents noted with final numbers included.
Do we have a second for that?
Second.
Second by Counsel Shumway. All right. And as the Vice Mayor explained, this is just simply a housekeeping issue because we had to wait for final numbers, and the online document did not have numbers in it. So, any questions or discussion from council on this amendment? Is there any public comment on this amendment? All right.
We may wanna clarify for the public that the new numbers and new documents will be available.
Available, that is a good point. Vice Mayor brings up a good point. The documents with the final numbers will be available on the city website for everybody to take a look at. All right. City Clerk, can you do a roll call on the amendment by substitution? Stoner.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Polikus, absent. McKinney.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor. Thank you very much. So that final of the document with the numbers is now 2018-76. All right, is there any discussion or comments from council on this item? I will just, Counsel Hanson.
Just one observation. I'm voting more or less on blind trust, because this is high finance, which is a bit much for me. And I trust our treasurer that this is correct, and furthermore, I'm going off council, so nothing will haunt me.[1125.12][1125.12](laughter) Thank you very much.
I would just like to close by, I know we have a couple more items this evening to close out getting started on the Public Works Center, but I just wanna thank Mr. Bishop and our legal counsel for staying with us, and kinda while we got through the weeds on the Building Authority and got this all put together. And I wanna thank city staff. Director Brown, you guys have done an amazing job putting this together and moving this forward. Director Smith, thank you. We appreciate it. It's a lot of work, as evidenced by the giant stack of documents sitting in front of us. With that, City Clerk, can you do a roll call, please? Gabriel.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Polikus, absent. Shumway.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Stoner.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor. Thank you. That motion carries. And I have a quick question for staff and Mr. Bishop. Do you need these documents signed right now before you leave to go to Cheyenne?
No. I'm gonna leave them. I'm coming back, as you know, next week for signatures.
For the document signing, yep.
I can pick them up then.
Okay. Fair enough. Just wanna make sure you had everything, so you guys can head back and drive safely to Cheyenne.
Thank you for taking us early on that, too.
Of course. Thank you. Thank you again for coming over.
Safe travels.
All right, we'll move on to item number 11. Counsel Stoner.
Your Honor, before you do, you had those sheets. They're gonna be laid out at the clerk's office so for us to sign individually, because we have to sign individually.
Yes. We have them. We do. All right. I'm gonna back up and go with item number 10. Counsel McKinney.
I move to approve the original ordinance number 1991, as recommended by the Planning Commission, on third and final reading, based on findings of fact and conclusions of law, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to sign the ordinance.
Second.
There we go. All right, we have a motion and a second.
Excited.
She's very excited to get this one out, apparently. Mr. Tini, welcome.
Mayor, Mayor and Council, good evening. As I did with the last round, I provided you a memo for an amended motion. After the city attorney and I looked at it again, we decided we wanted some, a little bit different language tweaked in the same section that we had tweaked during second reading. So, we're saying this is the final version. So, if you can, please use the amended motion. That's all I have on this item. I will actually note, though, we had two members of the public come in today to speak to me about it. They weren't happy with the requirements of citation authority by staff.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Any questions for Mr. Tini? The amendment is just a legal word, cleanup, essentially, so.
Want them an electrical contractor?
No.
Okay.
They were both what I'd consider general contractors. Those are people who do not need licenses, but they are required to get permits for all of their work.
Fair enough. All right, thank you. Counsel Hanson, do you have a question?
Your Honor, should I move, then, that we make the changes in the document?
Not quite. Not yet. Well, we'll do it as soon as we get through public comment. Do we have any public comment on this item? Are there any members of the public that would like to comment? All right, seeing none. Counsel Hanson.
Thank you, Your Honor. There are some, there were some wording differences that didn't come out quite correctly, and the attorney has the corrected version so that it would read correctly, and I would ask him to read that for, as an amendment. Thank you.
City Attorney, would you like to please read the language?
Since I think this is all my fault, yes, I should read.[1371.12][1371.12](laughter) I would like to ask you to move to amend Original Ordinance 1991, Sections 15.24.000. Point D, point two, and 15.24.000. E, point two, to delete the words, entities whose agents who has been found, and after the second or, add the following language, entities, entity whose agents are.
All right. Counsel Hanson, is that the motion you'd like to move?
Yes, that's what I'd like to move.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel McKinney. All right, so we have a motion on the amendment. Any other questions on this amendment? All right, are there any comments from the public on this amendment? Any comments or discussion from council on this amendment? City Clerk, we're clear on the amendment, right? All right, can you do a roll call, please, on the amendment? Shumway.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Stoner.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Polikus, absent. Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor. Thank you. That amendment carries. All right, back to discussion on third reading on this ordinance.
As amended.
As amended. Any discussion or comments by council members before we do roll call? All right, City Clerk, can you do a roll call? McKinney.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Stoner.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Polikus, absent. Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor. Thank you. That motion carries. All right, let's move on to item number 11. Counsel Stoner.
Thanks, Mayor. I move to approve Original Ordinance Number 1990 on third and final reading, rezoning one parcel of land from B to business to C to general commercial. Based on findings of facts and conclusions of law, authorizing the mayor and clerk to sign the ordinance.
Do we have? Second by Counsel Schuster. Mr. Tini.
Mayor and Council, I have nothing really to add to the actual discussion or the information being provided for tonight. We've done that over the last two meetings. I will note that, as it was forwarded on to me this evening, we did receive a letter of protest from an individual who owns property within the Fall Creek subdivision, per the request of council during pre-meeting. I just went back and took a look at the number of people and who all was sent notice. So there were 32 individuals who were sent notice that were within the 300 feet. The individual, Mr. Peter, I'm gonna, Scores, Scores possibly is how you pronounce his last name, I'm not sure, was not within that 300 feet. He lives actually 591 feet away from the subject property. He is further into the Fall Creek subdivision. He's on the southern edge, but he's further to the west, so further down, down the way where Bill and I would be someday in the future. So he did not receive a notice, but if he would've ever driven on 15th, he should've seen the sign there that is posted there. So, but that is a public comment that we did get. I do know the applicant is here. He did provide an additional, just a figure, just to see, give you an idea of, I think, what he's thinking within that building, types of uses. I'm sure he would be happy to answer any questions, and I am happy to answer any questions as well.
Questions from Mr. Tini. Counsel Hanson.
Just one question. Since this is outside the 300 whatever feet, is this a germane protest, then? How do we handle that? I don't know.
Mayor and Council, there's, any public comment can be considered by council. Of interest for the council within the 300 feet, if enough people within 300 feet protest, you can place the requested ordinance into a supermajority vote, essentially is what it is. We're not there, so.
But this doesn't.
But as a public comment, that's for council to consider, so.
Could be considered sort of a secondary protest or something. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Tini? All right, thank you. Give an opportunity to the applicant, if he'd like to come up, sure. Give an opportunity to the applicant if he'd like to come up, sure. Any information you'd like to provide or anything about this?
Can't we have some information on that?
Yep, that's what I'm asking.
Honorable Mayor and Counsel, Kurt Johansson. Yeah, this is just kind of the concept of what we're looking at, sort of just a lot of mini units, medium to large, or, so it's pretty benign, pretty, you know, small contractor again, big boy toy box, somebody wants to store a motorhome and a few other toys or whatever, so. Nothing major, no major industrial, it's, you know, it's a big building, but once you start cutting it up, it doesn't allow for anything too major to go in there, so. That's all I had.
Any questions, Counselor Hanson?
Just an explanation, more or less. This, this, of course, the same picture. The street, 15th Street is on this side? Or, I'm trying to orient myself.
Yeah, this project is a project in Castle Rock.
Oh, because I couldn't remember that many doors.
Yeah, no, I know, this is, yeah. This is a new building.
Okay.
But this is the concept, it's personal warehouse concept.
Good.
And we're partnering with these guys, they have a website, you can look at a lot of different pictures.
Thank you. Because I couldn't remember that many doors on, when it was a lumberyard.
No, I wish it was that nice already.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Counselor Stoner? Um, thank you so much. I was just wondering, through any of your other developments or similar projects, have you ever had to work through a conditional use permit?
I have not, no. Yep.
Any other questions?
Usually people in this type of project, they want to occupy, you know, immediately, they're ready to move, and to wait several months is just pretty prohibitive, so. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, are there any comments from the public on this item? Seeing none, comments and discussion by council? Vice Mayor?
You know, I've been pretty silent on this issue so far, and I've bounced around different reasons for my previous votes, and one of the things I kept coming back to was one of the comments that Planner Tini made, I don't know, the second or the third, or the first or the second reading, about his thoughts regarding it moving back or needing to move back to a B1 or B2 zoning. And, and you didn't think, if I, if I remember correctly, that that would happen. And, and I started thinking, you know, maybe it would over time, perhaps down the road, and I felt like the economy is gonna, gonna demand, at least in my opinion, in time, that that actually be a B2, a B2 zoning, because that, that could very well be more of a retail-ish corridor down the road, because it's going to be one of our main thoroughfares. And, and maybe your future, maybe five years, maybe not, but I'm thinking 20 years. So I've really, really struggled, and I've driven by this place like three times now trying to get a, a feel for, you know, what it should be, what it could be, what, what we should really do. And, and I'm still struggling because, because we don't know, you know, what, what the future's gonna hold and, and what the demand is gonna be, but I ultimately believe that demand is gonna be more B2 long-term than C to short-term, if that makes sense. So I guess I just wanted to get that out there, and I'm gonna vote to support, to not change the zoning on this tonight, just because of, I think it really needs to be, it needs to remain what it is, because it's gonna be one of our main, main roads. And anyway, and I apologize, you know, for not getting that all out there weeks ago, but I, I don't know, I just think it, I think, and I think it's a great piece of property. You know, it has huge marketability and, and opportunity, and I just wish our processes, you know, were a little cleaner and quicker, you know, that we could, could do, do different things, be a little more agile, so, yeah, anyway.
Any other discussion? Counselor Stoner?
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to bring a couple other thoughts to the table before we take the final vote on this. As I've been reflecting on this, I've been trying to separate our decision before us, which is to grant a spot up zone, from the project. Project is great, I really like the project, I love the infill, I love the vision of it, I want it to happen, I think it would be an asset to that area and to the neighborhood. However, if we can achieve the project, whether we do it through an up zone or whether we do it through a conditional use permit, to me, a no vote on this decision is not a no vote against the project. A no vote on this decision is a no vote, it's a vote against hasty planning. And that's why I'm uncomfortable and why I have been championing, going on the more conservative side and maintaining that zoning here. We don't know what that area is gonna look like in the future, and while we can sit up here and kind of guesstimate and think about it, it's something that I believe should have a lot of thought, intentional thought, holistic thought, long-term thought, which is what planning's all about. And it sounds like that area is gonna be developed in general, on a whole, and I feel like if we make this choice in the short term, it's gonna shape that conversation, and I don't have the information or the input to make that level of decision about the future of that land right now. So I'm gonna maintain my no vote, I encourage others to join me, not because I don't want to see the project happen, but because the project can still happen in the B2 zone. Right. Thanks.
Any other discussion or comments by council tonight? All right, see, Counselor Hanson?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. I think we are often chided for standing in the way, in the way of development, and I don't want to stand in the way of development. And yes, this project may happen if we don't change the zoning, but it cannot probably happen in the same way, because then, of course, it's limited as to what can go into it. So from that perspective, I think there isn't too much infill possible around it anyway. Some, yeah, but not too much. I mean, it's a developed area for the most part, so I think we're just building up a barrier that I find is unnecessary at this point. Thank you.
Any other comments from council tonight? City Clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Shumway.
Yes.
Polikas absent. Stoner.
No.
Schuster.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Pierce.
No.
Somerville.
Yes.
You have six yeses, two nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you, that motion carries. All right, let's see, seven, 10, why don't we take a quick 10-minute break, and we'll come back and finish the rest of the agenda. 12, Counselor Gabriel.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move that council approve the agreement for professional services between the City of Laramie and Simon Incorporated for concrete repair and replacement services for a two-year period, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second. Second by the Vice Mayor. Director Frazier?
Honorable Mayor, City Council, it's a pleasure to be here today with you at this proposed process for concrete repair and replacement services. What you've got before you is a project that was kind of born out of work between the Parks and Recreation Department, the Public Works Division Department, related to a better way or an easier way to streamline some of our concrete projects. A little bit of the intent behind this was to, for removal and replacement of existing that's not really built, to put in new, it's a chance for us to address failed concrete, flatwork, and curb and gutter throughout the city, apron approaches and some different items as we go through the city and find a way to do that. Staff had let out an RFQ that would ask concrete providers in the community to provide pricing for a certain range of items, flatwork six over six, flatwork four over six, curb A, curb B, or, and then asphalt repair and a MOB fee related to that. We received two proposals, one was incomplete, very, very incomplete. Simon was the only responsive, after review by Public Works and Parks and Recreation staff, and in an interview with Simon, we felt that Simon was the best prepared to provide these services per the contract. We did, we have talked about it as staff, and just to help you folks with your decision is, this is not intended to take away any project that would be above the bid limit. This would be below, anything that's below the state statute required bid limit of $35,000. We also, as a staff, kind of decided that, we don't know that it's appropriate to put this out on any contract that may be over $20,000, so we'll really limit what we're doing. Our intent is to use the city's small contract for each one of the projects. The way the process would work is staff, the authorizing staff, whether it's Parks and Work, Public Works, anybody that uses it, engineering, would meet with Simon, discuss the parameters of the project, make sure that they're clear of the requirements and what the expectations are, put that into one of the city's small project contract forms, which are approvable up to a certain, certain limit through either the director or the city manager, and then affect that contract to make sure that the project is held under those realms. I've probably added enough fuel to the fire, so I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Director Frazier, Counselor Hanson?
Just to clarify, thank you, Your Honor, this pertains only to, so to speak, public sidewalks, in front of public property, rather. So I think the public needs to be clear on this, this is not a revitalization of our shared concrete program with private individuals in front of their homes, et cetera. This pertains, and we're sharing with ourselves, in other words, we're paying 100% of it. Is that true?
Honorable Mayor, through you to Counselor Hanson, that's correct, is that this will be on city responsibility, city-owned property only. To give you a few examples, in speaking with Shane Johnson, the street manager, he'd really like to use this to address alleyway entries. You know, as it goes, as one gets damaged, it takes a little bit of time for staff to obtain a few different quotes and go through the process, so we feel like this will streamline the process. From a Parks and Recreation standpoint, we've identified two, two sidewalks that are our responsibility to handle, that are, that are very, very bad, and then we've got lots of curb and gutter just around our park system and trails or concrete pathways in our parks that really need to be addressed, and this is a good way for us to be able to use that money efficiently.
Thank you. I thought, thought the public needs to be clear on this issue, that it's not the old shared system.
Counselor Gabriel?
Thank you, Mayor. Prime example would be something similar to what you did, 9th Street and Labonte Park, that sidewalk and curb repair there, something like that.
Honorable Mayor, through you to Counselor Gabriel, that's correct. That money was money that we had used, that we had acquired through different pieces and moving around of projects, but it's time, we've got enough concrete work throughout the park system that we really need to start addressing some of the failed pieces. Interestingly enough, I was the one that pushed for the sub base. The two projects that we've done, both at Holding Pond One, which is at 30th and Reynolds, kind of by Basic Beginnings North, and then that sidewalk that's there by Labonte on 9th Street, plus the approach, when we did pull all that up, that concrete had been poured on native, and so there was no base. And so I think if we really, as an entity, have a solid price that gets us good base, and staff inspects it and make sure that put, that's put in, we should be better, should see better concrete work and longevity of the concrete work is what our hope is.
Other questions for Director Frazier? Counselor Hanson?
Only one financial question. It says not to exceed $100,000, $1,000 per year. Let's say something comes in now that, and the first year it goes to $120,000, wouldn't that be kind of impeding the process? Would leave $80,000 for the second year, but to limit it in that way, isn't that, is that just a financial consideration that we don't have any more money in the till, or why are we doing it that way?
Honorable Mayor, through you to Counselor Hanson, I think there probably is more money available for concrete repair and replacement than $100,000. That was a number that staff felt like we could get accomplished in any one calendar year. This is, this is add projects on top of all the other projects that we may potentially have going on, and council was gracious enough, gracious enough toward my department with $50,000 in infrastructure and ADA improvement, which this goes towards. And, you know, I'm concerned about the ability to actually get through that $50,000 in a calendar year. I, I just don't know that we're gonna have the bandwidth, staff power, manpower-wise, to get that much more out there.
Okay, that makes some sense, thank you.
Other questions for Director Frazier? So I have a quick question about the budget allocation. I think when we did last year's budget, we put 200, or this, this year's budget, we did $200,000 for the concrete match program as a kind of an incentive for council to work on a policy for curb and gutter. Is that utilizing this money, or is that, that money still remaining? Okay. All right, any other questions? Counselor Stoner?
Thanks, Mayor. Can you repeat the answer to Mayor Somerville's question?
The honorable mayor through you to, or honorable mayor for your question, is that this is not that funding, this is funding that was allocated separately by council, or has been allocated to the Public Works Department and Concrete Repair and Replacement.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any public comment on this item? Seeing none, back to council, comments or discussion on this item? All right, City Clerk, can you do a roll call, please?
Stoner.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Polikas absent. McKinney.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you, that motion carries. On to item number 13, Counselor Shumway.
Thank you, Your Honor. The next two items that were gonna be before the council are professional agreements between the City of Laramie and different groups relating to the North Campus and the Public Works Service Center. This item, I move to approve the professional services agreement between the City of Laramie and Plan One Architecture in the amount of $137,562.50 for bidding and construction phase services related to the North Campus Project, the Public Works Service Center. To approve the contract therefore, authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign.
Second.
Second by Counselor Schuster. Director Smith?
Your Honor, the mayor and members of council, as Counselor Shumway mentioned, these next two items are related to the Public Works Service Center. Formerly, we call it the North Campus Project or various other versions. You might recall the last two meetings, we've had items associated with this issue. Two meetings ago, we asked council to relinquish SRF loan monies back to the state. That, in essence, greased the wheels to get us to this point, so at the last meeting, you also approved a change order for the project that kind of helped us finish things up, get us to the bidding phase and finalizing design and to bidding. This particular contract with Plan One is a professional services agreement where Plan One will serve as owner's representative. So this is a rather complicated project of, as I've mentioned before, and due to contract delivery method, which is a construction manager at risk, project delivery method, it is in our best interest to have an owner's rep, so that's what Plan One will do, they contract directly with us, they'll look out for our best interests, and so during bidding and the construction phase, they'll basically be contract services for the city, watching out for our best interests. So that, that helps in that they have the professional expertise to do this, where staff, we do a lot of civil-type construction and not a lot of building construction, and so they, they know the ins and outs a lot better than the city, and they've also completed the design, so they know the buildings very well. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions for Director Smith, Counselor Hanson?
Thank you, Your Honor. I noticed Plan One is out of Rock Springs, right?
That's correct.
They affirm that has a lot of experience in remodeling this kind of stuff, rather than a local firm, because we usually try, of course, to go local if possible, so I was just wondering why we went with this firm.
Your Honor, the mayor, Councilmember Hanson, let me, let me back up four years. When we first contracted, we initiated this project, we issued a request for qualifications, and we, that request for qualifications solicited the services of a general contractor architect team. So when we received proposals, there was about 14 separate proposals that we received, very, very good turnout, that included local firms, but in the end, the team of Ascent Construction and Plan One Architecture Um, but in the end, the team of Ascent Construction and Plan One Architecture was the team that, that was selected as part of that selection process. So this is just an extension of the existing contract and agreement that we have, that we started four years ago. So we went through the public solicitation process, considered all applicants, and this was the team that, that was selected. So they have completed the design, and now we're ready to move on to construction, so.
Thank you for clarifying.
Any other questions for Director Smith? Thank you. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none? Discussion or comments by council on this item? City clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Gabriel.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Polikus, absent. Shumway.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Stoner.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero noes, and one absent, your honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. All right, on to item number 14, Councilor Shumway.
Thank you, your honor. I move to approve the agreement between the City of Laramie and Ascent Construction for Construction Management Services related to the Public Works Service Center Project, to approve the contract therefore and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign.
Good second?
Second.
Second by the vice mayor. Director Smith.
Your honor, the mayor and members of council, uh, this is the construction portion of the Public Works Service Center. And as I just described, Ascent Construction's been on board with the city for now close to four years. And we're finally to the point we can actually bid the project and go to construction. So, uh, this contract is a standard, um, AI, A document, which in, in civil construction and a lot of the public works projects that we use, we use a, a standard City of Laramie, uh, construction contract. But typically for these types of projects, we use AI, A documents. So this is a standard document. It's a construction manager at-risk document. That means that Ascent Construction is the construction manager and they assume the risk of the project. So, uh, it's, otherwise, it's a, it's a generally a, a straightforward construction contract. They will solicit bids from subcontractors. So they will do some of the work themselves, but their primary role with this project is to service construction manager. So this is where they bid all of the subcontractor work out, so the local firms, the electricians and plumbers and carpenters and so forth. They all get an opportunity to bid on their particular area of interest and expertise. Once Ascent has all of this information and these low bids compiled, they will generate what's called a guaranteed maximum price. So if you notice in this contract, I didn't include anything in there in reference to a fee or a contract amount. It's based on the percentage of the guaranteed maximum price, which is two and a half percent. So if we had a $10 million project, their fee would be $250,000 to serve as our contract, or construction manager. So this is one step in the process. Within about two or three months, when they have developed a guaranteed maximum price, that will be brought before council, you say, yes, we will accept that price, sign off on it. And at that point, she'll know exactly what the fees are and what the project will cost us, so. With that, any questions?
Any questions for Director Smith on this part? All right.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none? Comment or discussion by council on this item? Councilor Hanson.
Hey, does it have to say somewhere in the contract that this is a construction manager at-risk agreement? Because I, I, that wasn't going to be my question before you started, but then you said construction manager at-risk, uh, which is what I'd like. Uh, is that listed somewhere? Was that stated somewhere?
Your honor, the mayor and Councilmember Hanson, in the title of the agreement, um, it's an agreement between the owner and construction manager. So in the body of the document, I, I'd have to look for it, but it talks about guaranteed maximum price and so forth. So it's, it's in there, it would take me a little while to find the information, but.
Yeah, because I couldn't see it in the title, you know, it says between owner and architect.
It's, it's described, these documents are rather detailed, and you have to kind of work through them to find that, but it's in there. It is.
And everybody understands that it's a construction manager at-risk.
Yes.
Thank you.
And your honor, I, I failed to mention one thing, and, uh, I apologize. On page 12 of the actual agreement, if you could turn to page 12.
Of their statement.
On, in section 6.8.
Page 12.
Point 1, item number 8, it says costs for services incurred during the pre-construction phase. That needs to be stricken from the contract, so we'll strike through that, an initial on it. And the reason for that, those, um, those services are part of the change order that you approved two weeks ago. So, you know, just so there's no confusion, that will be taken out of the contract.
So Director Smith, I think we'll need an amendment to take that out of the contract before council approves it. City attorney?
I could go either way, but it would be just as clean to do an amendment, sure.
So...
I would, I would ask you to move to, uh, strike paragraph 6, point 8, point 1, point 8.
Page 12.
So moved.
So moved. There you go. That's the best statement I've heard.
I'll second.
All right. We got a motion from Councilor Shumway and a second for Councilor Gabriel to strike the aforementioned. Any questions on that from council? Is there any public comment on the amendment to strike that? All right. Any other discussion on the amendment? Vice mayor?
So I just want to thank, um, Director Smith for reminding us that we've been four years in. And, and, and we're starting construction. And what, are we going to be four years out or eight years out? Um, what's? Sorry, I know you sat down.
That's okay, your honor, the mayor. Now, the construction schedule at this point, assuming you follow through with the approval this evening, uh, we will finalize the design during the month of December. Obviously, with the holidays, you're probably not a good idea to solicit bids. But, uh, after the first of the year, we will start bidding the project and getting subcontractors on board. Uh, and it'll, it'll be about 11- to 12-month construction process. So, you know, this time next year, the project should be completed.
So we'll have ribbon cutting.
You bet.
Tours. Got it. Thank you.
I was just thinking we should write a memoir or something about this project.
You said, uh...
The saga of the North Campus.
That's right.
All right. Any, any discussion on the amendment to strike that line? City clerk, can you do roll call on the amendment, please?
Gabriel.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Polikus, absent. Shumway.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Stoner.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero noes, and one absent, your honor.
Thank you. That amendment carries and now is part of the main document. All right, um, going back to discussion from council on the main document as amended, any discussion or comments? All right. City clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Stoner.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Polikus, absent. McKinney.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero noes, and one absent, your honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. All right, let's move on to item number 16. Councilor Schuster.
Thank you very much. The title of this ordinance is Original Ordinance Number 1992, Amending Title V of the Laramie Municipal Code 5.09.140, Alcoholic Beverages Fees to Add a Provision for Alcohol Permit Refunds. I move to approve Original Ordinance Number 1992, Amending Title V of the Laramie Municipal Code 5.09.140, Alcohol Beverage Fees to Add a Provision for Alcohol Permit Refunds on Second Reading.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by the vice mayor. City clerk.
Thank you, mayor and council. Um, the ordinance that you have in front of you, um, was brought forward, um, in result to a work session that we had to address an, an absence in the provisions in code to allow us to refund fees for denied permits. Um, so with this ordinance, we have now formed guidelines for staff to be able to follow, you know, when we can provide a, a refund and when we cannot. Um, just to note, um, in state statute, we cannot refund fees for any issued licenser permit. So once it's been issued, we cannot refund it. Um, however, we have written into our procedures that we can transfer it to another date for the same location, same event. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Questions for the city clerk on this? I do have a quick clarification. We had, uh, conversations, uh, last time about the alcohol catering and malt beverage. We don't need any further amendments to the text that's here to make sure that you can issue refunds for both, right?
Uh, right. That is correct. Yeah, the, the way that that's stated, um, is that, you know, it opens that up for us to be able to issue the refunds, and then we follow the procedure that's put in place.
For either one.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions for the city clerk? Are there any public comments on this item? All this public here and no comments.
They're, they're saving it up.
All right. Back to council, any comments or discussion on this item? Okay. City clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Hanson.
Yes.
Polikus, absent. Shumway.
Yes.
Stoner.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero noes, and one absent, your honor.
Thank you. That motion carries, and with permission of council, that'll go on the consent agenda, if that's all right with everybody, for third reading. All right, let's move on to item number 17. Uh, sorry, 16A, my apologies. Um, Councilor Stoner, would you like to do the planning commission?
Sure. Um, I move to approve City Council Resolution 201877, appointing one member, Jordan Geis, to the Planning Commission Board of Adjustments for the City of Laramie, Wyoming, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the resolution.
Do we have a second? We have to put this on the floor first.
Okay. Second.
Okay. Councilor Schuster, second, and I will go back to Councilor Stoner for the amendment, for the additional name.
Thanks, mayor. I move to, um, in addition, uh, appoint a second member, Shannon Poke, um, to the Planning Commission Board of Adjustments for the City of Laramie, Wyoming, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
And could we also specify it'll be the same term?
For the same term.
Second.
Second by Councilor Shumway on the amendment. And just to clarify for everybody, I think that, uh, that person, so we had two interviewees, the open spots, um, and this person just, just the paperwork wasn't, paperwork wasn't quite done when the agenda got put together. So for the public, we're just amending it to get it all done tonight.
But the person was properly interviewed.
By three people.
By three people, yes. All right. Any questions on that from council, on the amendment? Do we have any public comment on the amendment? Any council comments or discussion on the amendment? City clerk, can you do roll call on the amendment?
Gabriel.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Polikus, absent. Shumway.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Stoner.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero noes, and one absent, your honor.
Thank you. So now we have on the floor a resolution with two appointees to it. Do we have any public comment on this item? All right. Any comment or discussion by council on this item? City clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Stoner.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Polikus, absent. McKinney.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero noes, and one absent, your honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. All right, on to item number 17, public comment on non-agenda items. The last opportunity for public comments, right? Got nothing. All right, no public comment. Uh, item number 18, consideration of future council work session topics. Mayor. Councilor Stoner.
I don't know if it's appropriate since I am finishing up my term, but I wanted to bring up in light of, um, the conversation we had about, uh, conditional use permits and also some of the permitted uses under our existing zoning, um, for us to have a work session that firstly looks at our conditional use permit process and make sure that it's streamlined, um, and taking any onerous pieces of it out. Uh, and then secondly, to just look at the uses that we have under C2, B2, B1, all of those things. Maybe update the slaughterhouse aspects and some other things.
Very much I second that one.
But I think those two things would be, uh, really good use of time.
Okay. So I think it'd be appropriate to have two people that are going to stay on that would want to do that, so Brian?
Then I take her motion.
Go over Jane. All good with that? Okay.
All right. So we've got that on the work session topic list. We'll make sure that gets added for next year. Any other requests? All right.
Next year.
Okay.
Since I'm going off council, I have about eight.
I think that'd be appropriate for us to bring our wish list next, next meeting. All right, uh, moving on to item number 19. Councilor Hanson.
I move to council adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by the vice mayor, although... Hi, any opposed? All right, we are adjourned.